It doesn't take long for a neighborhood. Someone from Fort Saint John owns this one now, and all they care about is collecting rent. Later, an apartment building with 40 units and four condominiums with 12 units each was constructed along 92nd. Just last year, three units with three condos in each were built hollow and dry, bringing the total number of households to 159. A deep ditch, approximately 75 centimeters or two and a half feet, surrounds this development in some places on both sides of the road. It creates problems year-round as ditches are meant to drain water away. But the ground is too level, and this doesn't happen. In winter, it's a traffic hazard; in spring, they fill with meltwater, which backs up into the... In winter, the frozen culverts force the water into the basements. Some residents have installed heat tapes at their own expense. Heat tapes to try and keep those culverts thawed, to try and keep that water out of their basements. To get rid of the ditches would require a neighborhood improvement initiative. But historically, any neighborhood petition for improvements would be voted down by landlords of the rental units. So it is difficult to implement improvements without a council initiative. In the '90s, when I was on the council, we had a similar problem in the West End: too many slow loans. We, as a council, had as our goal a program to pave every street in Dawson Creek, which, of course, kept getting voted down in that neighborhood. We felt that the residents of these neighborhoods had been paying property taxes for many years and deserved the improvements, and so it was done with a council initiative. I, too, have been paying property taxes for more than 25 years on Loran Drive and have yet to see any improvements. The only time I see the city up there, they're cutting those empty lots that they're trying to sell. This is, like I say, this is the last bit of open property left at the ranch. And to me, it's like a window that is being boarded up with more and more and more development. Also, I wonder if the residents realize, or the developers realize, that that's a possible debris field? When that was leveled off, all the concrete and crap was shoved over the hill and covered with dirt. They might give you surprises when they start to excavate.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the history lesson, too. I didn't know where Lorraine Groves' name comes from.
Well, you know, if we ignore history, we do something at her peril. Thank you.
Thanks, Marquita. So I'll call again. Is there anybody from the gallery that wishes to speak as well? Please come forward.
Hi, Mrs. Lebke. What Marquita was saying, I'm probably going to repeat what you... I have a feeling I wish I'd heard what she said. Now, I know you guys can't... Development's good for the city, and we can't stop development. And I don't think anybody... Marquita knows that land really well. But I don't think anybody knows that land better than I do. I don't live up there anymore. But I couldn't... I couldn't... I had to come and talk to you guys because, in my mind, there's four issues on that property. The first one, and again, I don't... I'm sorry if I repeat what Marquita said. But the first one I'm really concerned is with the water. It's a watershed from the Ravelli property down through the community forest. And if anything is done wrong, Darren James' duplex, Marquita's duplex, Chris' duplex, they're going to have some major water problems. That's not including the houses that are along the banks there. Like, there is so much water coming off of that, off of there, that there probably should have been a storm drain or something put in at the bottom. When they put that road in off of 92nd up to Loran Drive, there probably should have been a storm drain or something installed there. Because the water runs down 92nd, wrecks the asphalt. You guys are probably spending a fortune patching that 92nd asphalt. I don't know if it contributes or not to the sloughing that's happening down in the ditch by... Okay, it probably does, but it's definitely an issue. And anybody that's building up there needs to know that that situation has to be addressed. Where Arlene used to live there, the water gets so bad that it's almost like quicksand in the spring. That area that was right next to... Again, I don't know who's living there, but the bottom part there coming onto 92nd is very, very wet. One of the things I think that aesthetically that's important for everybody to realize is it's probably the nicest view in all of Dawson Creek. I can understand somebody wanting to build there. I suggest to you guys, every one of you, go up there, take a walk, and look. From the fireworks in the fall fair days to the airshow, it is spectacular. The lights, the city lights, it's number one. There's not a better spot. There's the benches that Marquita and those guys installed further back. I would be concerned about views from the community forest that you get if things aren't done right. So aesthetically, I think that that needs to come into account. I would personally think that it's an entrance to the community forest that they developed. People walk their dogs there. There's a beaten-down path because people are going in and out of that area, all from the Park Hill School area and coming up. And they're walking their dogs into the community forest from there. I took the initiative years ago, and I planted 300 trees with the idea that I'd approach council at some point in time and suggest that they develop it into parkland and make it an entrance into the community forest. Out of the 300 trees, and I paid for the water that I planted there, probably 50 lived. And I planted trees numerous, numerous times in this area. And I have a big concern that there's pollution in there. You know, without testing, nobody can know. But I understood the American Army, when they cleaned up the mess hall and stuff like that, they put a lot of the debris into that area. And, you know, I don't know asbestos in the pipes and stuff like that that they had used back then. Again, I'm not an environmentalist, but I just would say to you guys that before you sell it, you want to do an environmental study on it. So that's the water and the environment. The other one, and again, it seems like every 10 years or so we come across this. And last time, last time we were talking about it, I asked that something be put in the file so that, you know, every few years, when it comes out, people have the information in the file to see the things that need to be addressed. And one of the other, and I can't remember, but there was an electrical issue. Like, it was a big expense because the old... The hydro is old that goes in behind the duplexes there. Did you... Did Marquita, did you address the electrical?
No.
No. I know there's something with the electrical. And again, I would just say upon you guys that it's your fiduciary duty to make sure that all that information is out. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Come on forward.
Back in 1998, myself and my partner actually did the...
Sorry, I apologize. Do you mind introducing yourself?
Richard Graham. I live at 9104 Forest Park Drive, so I'm still a resident in the cul-de-sac. My partner and I, back in 1998, were the ones that developed that cul-de-sac. Unfortunately, he attended the meetings as I was employed at the time. And I had what he had told me, but of course, I don't have it in writing. Perhaps there's some old city council meetings. One of the concerns of us at that time was what the adjoining properties were zoned, and they were RS1. I believe one part of one of the city council meetings was that property wouldn't be rezoned. There was a sewer issue that they're at the max in that area or that part of the area for the sewer lines. Larger lines would have to be installed if they did change zoning. It would probably accommodate housing. I'm questioning whether... Do you have city council meeting reports from back in 1998?
Yeah, it'd be filed, yes.
If there was a promise made that that wouldn't be rezoned, would that promise still be binding?
I look at Jim, but no. I don't think, unless it was actually an order of council.
Through your worship, as you know, when we went through the normalization of all our parks, council... Today's council is not bound by yesterday's council. That's why citizens can vote for a change and actually get a change?
Well, one of the things that we developed was the fact that it would remain RS1. And because it has been, we've sold all the lots. The very last one is being built on this year. So you've got 13, 14 families that have based the building of their homes on the fact that the adjoining property is RS1. And to change it after the fact is really an insult to those 14 families. I wonder, too, have people from 92nd, 93rd, and 94th Avenue been included in that letter writing? That was... We were informed of the process. Were they also informed?
Kevin or Jim, sorry? What is... What was the notification area?
Through your worship, we actually went to a more extensive notification area than was required to encapsulate all of the people in Forest Park Drive, plus everybody to the south for that walk. I believe it's 30-year premier over the common block. So we went a little more, and then there was notification.
So that was 92nd, or would that have been through 93rd Avenue?
It probably wouldn't have gone as far as you think.
Reason I ask is when they put that strip of pavement between Loran Drive and the bottom of the hill, we were never informed, and it was... Why do you guys care? Well, because now there's a major thoroughfare by our land, and the city didn't inform us. People have invested, as I mentioned. If our property values do go down, of course, that is a loss to the city, offset somewhat by the net gain of an additional property. It says in this letter that my neighbor wrote that there has been an offer to purchase the land and retain the RS1 zoning?
I believe there was one, yes.
Okay. That would, of course, be much more preferable. As the previous speaker mentioned, there's some excellent views there. And if you look at the multiple housing across the street, most of the driveways, of course, are onto the inside. So really, it's the backyards on 15th Street that would be across the street from most of the new residents if there was RS1. If there was a proposal for RS1, it would be much more favorable and much more fair to the existing residents. It's a nice buffer. If people, knowing what's on the other side of 15th, choose to buy houses or buy vacant lots to build houses for RS1, they're walking into it with their eyes open. For us to now be faced with multiple-family dwelling, is that row housing or is that an apartment-building possibility?
On that, there is row housing. RM1, I do not believe allows for... I stand to be corrected, but does not allow for apartment buildings. But it will be like row housing, duplexes, triplexes, duplexes, that kind of thing.
Well, RS1 would be a nice buffer, especially if there's been an offer. As mentioned, there's great views there, so I don't think the city would have any... The developer would have much, if any, problem selling those, especially since most of the multiple housing is facing the other direction. It would probably go through that way. Land is at a premium in the city, so if the proposal doesn't go through now, I'm sure there will be other offers in the future for RS1 development. It would make all the neighbors happy there. Also, parking quite often on these multiple-family homes is not sufficient. Most residents in Dawson Creek, probably most families, have two vehicles. Sometimes they have a business vehicle, so they have a third. If you look on the south side of 92nd Avenue, the complete mess of vehicles because of insufficient parking, the city almost should adopt a bylaw that a two-bedroom unit needs three parking spaces. People should not have to park out onto the street because there's insufficient parking made by a development. And that's a concern. Also, I think the school, Crescent Park, is... Is it not almost getting to the max of students?
Not that I've heard.
Okay, well, multiple-family dwellings would impact that more than single-family dwellings if that's an issue. And I think there's some fairness that needs to be addressed to existing property owners. And the other letters, those four letters that were submitted, can they be read?
They're attached with there, but are they with the package that anybody can grab, Brenda? I'm not... I hope you appreciate, I'm not going to go forward and read. Some of them are two, three pages long in small types. Those are for council's information.
Okay, well, I hope all the council members have read those four letters because that's people that are on vacation. It is July, that otherwise wouldn't be heard. And there's good views. There won't be any problem selling them as RS1. It might be this year. It might not take till next year. I think the city would be much better off allowing RS1 development other than maybe they'd better dig some holes to see what's underneath them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, speak at this time?
Well, nobody else is going to go. I'm going to go.
Hey, Ron. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ron Molson. I would... I'll excuse my appearance. I would like to look a little bit better when I come to a meeting as important as this, but my schedule, I'm in between jobs.
It's tough working for a living, I know.
The matter at hand is, and I live right on Forest Park Drive, 9113 Forest Park Drive. Some things came up this morning, but Mrs. Lebke, the history on this land blows me away. I had no idea about that, so I'm not prepared to speak on that. They're the experts, obviously. All I can say is that, obviously, that might need a little... I would say that might take a little... It concerned me. But anyway, I guess what does concern me is, obviously, my history has came in about six years ago into the town of Dawson Creek, although living on the outskirts, helping Bonanza for the rest of my life. We seen an opportunity to move into this town. We wanted to bring what we had into town. We brought in quite a bit of investment into the town. And all our employees have always been from this town. We run an oil field business, two oil field businesses here. And I guess the decision to come to Forest Park Drive is we had plans for a big fancy house that we wanted to build in this town, and we couldn't find the proper area, the proper area to do it. We were really close to buying where some of the other people are developing right now, but then we ended up buying a house next door because it was easy and it was done. But one of the biggest decisions to make, the easiest part of that decision, was knowing the zoning of that land along the side. And that helped us make a fairly substantial investment, and we've invested a lot more, like in my backyard. I would invite any of you to come see the view from the other side. I'd love for you to come see the view from the other side, like from my backyard and what we have there. And I would like to protect that from the standpoint of our investment because I know the value of my land will drop with the multi-family rezoning and the development that will ensue after that. That is... I'm positive of that, even though it won't be reflected in my property value, but it will be reflected in reality. The second point is, I guess, that... I mean, that's when we come to town, that's a major, major thought. I guess it's kind of sad to see, like what Mrs. Lebke said, it's one of the last places. It's a very difficult place to develop. That's why it's still sitting. And I would hope that the city wouldn't just sell the land just to make the money because it's easy. Because I look at every difficult piece of land to develop in Dawson Creek, and there's an apartment building on it or multi-family. That seems to be the theme here. And I do know that there's land available. This is very large. I don't agree with the fact of going up in the air all the time and multi-family and packing everybody into one spot. I hear this word from this room all the time. I read it all the time. I keep up on current events, even though I may not participate in a lot of them right now. Maybe in the future, I can be one of you. But anyway, what I'm thinking here is sustainability. Like, I hear that word come out of this council a lot, sustainability. I don't think sustainability in rental units, because that's what they will be. That's what they will be. They're multi-family, but they will end up to be rental units. And I don't think our... I don't think that's a long-term sustainability option here. We need single-family dwellings here. We need something. We need people to invest in here. I don't think our... From what I understand, the enrollment in our schools doesn't reflect a big jump in population. People aren't moving here. They're coming here to work. The work is here. When the work slows down, these people will be gone. We'll end up with empty rental units and overpriced housing again. So those are, I guess, some of the points I'd like to make. I think there's land available around, maybe for multi-family. And I would like to see a buffer. I would like to see in any development, when you're developing a city and when you're making a plan and you're making residential plans, that you allow for a buffer between these types of developments. That just makes good sense. I think that would be my biggest concern is why don't we allow for a buffer? There's maybe some history value, historical value. I don't know. But it is a great place to live up there, and we invested a lot of money in there. And I guess I'm there to protect that investment. I know there's not very many of us up there because it's a higher-end spot. I mean, I have a large lot. You could probably squeeze... I'm sure. I looked. I could squeeze three houses. I could probably run a couple horses in my backyard. Is that fair? I don't know. Maybe I should share that with everybody else. But that's what I bought. That was what was developing. That's what I came to town for. And that's what I would like to protect. So I'm very adamant on trying to protect my investment in this town. And this town, we believe in. We believe in. We came from Alberta. We came over there. I knew where the future was, and this is where we came, and this is where we want to be. And I just would hate to see what we dreamed of and everything go down. I'm just one person, but obviously, there's more of us here. There's more of us here that really care about that area. And I'm going to move on here because I've set enough. There's lots of people here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate your time. I'm also looking for a place for my new horse, if the offer's open.
I've got lots of room, and I invite you to please come to my house and look at that, all of you, from the other end.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak, then? We've almost gone through the whole room. There's one left. There you go.
Joe Delosky, 9106 Forest Park Drive. Most of you know me. I did currently live at... Or I currently live there. Our past house was 1340 92nd Avenue, right adjacent to the city property. When Marquita brought up the water problem, I can tell you that I've pushed probably 24-inch logs, chunks of wood, at least 20 of them straight down, trying to get... I had rented a picker truck to lift my shed off when I moved. Couldn't do it. And that was in... That was in... Out in the middle of summer. So it had been runoff had been done with and everything. So yeah, there's going to be an issue there with the problem for Florida. I stayed in that area for the reason that that was RS1. I invested a substantial amount of money in Forest Park Drive. I would venture to say that's probably the most expensive cul-de-sac in Dawson Creek, which is really irrelevant, but to us, it is relevant. You put more high-density housing up there or medium-density. Since that street went through, and I had the pleasure of being right where the stop sign is, the traffic is horrendous. I don't know what the proposal is for how many units, but I figure you can count on three vehicles per unit. And that stop sign coming down the hill has been an issue ever since I lived at 1340, of people screaming through there. The RCMP have done a good job of trying to police it, but they can't police only one corner in Dawson Creek. I would love the idea of making that into a park. Yeah, we would all love that. But is that reality or not? That's up to you guys. That's all I have to say. Think hard on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Hi there. I'm Becky Harris. I live at 1332 on 92nd Avenue. I actually want to speak for some of us. We did not receive a package. I don't know what package that actually was issued for coming today. I actually received this from a neighbor, and that's why I'm here. I'm talking to several people this morning. They didn't receive any package or information. So I don't know, sorry, what you were referring to.
A letter.
The package was sent out.
A letter.
What I'd like to say is, first of all, there is a water issue. If you actually go to the bottom of my drive at 1332 on 92nd Avenue, you'll see that there is actually water still coming off the actual property at this point. And we're almost in August, and we've had quite substantial heat. I'm sorry, I'm not the greatest talker in front of everybody.
That's fine.
I also feel that we paid a great deal amount of money to live in that area, and we, I would think, pay probably the most taxes. Now, whether people think that's good or not, we pay a substantial amount of taxes because we live in that nice neighborhood, as far as I'm concerned. And I think that does need to be addressed. I talked to a fellow that was coming around a couple of months ago. I guess his name was Dr. Ham... Sorry, Ron Hamm. I didn't know that it was declined. I know there was several people that actually were okay with that. I was one of them. I actually asked him several questions. He was going to put four units in, which would be actually eight residential. I thought that was actually quite nice, other than having a bunch of, let's just say, the houses that are already up there right now, they're actually not upkept. They look like slums personally, and I don't think that's really fair for our neighborhood to be actually looking like that. And I would hate to see that coming down onto our property and where we are. So I'd just like to say my part in it, and I think that if you all think about that, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. So I'll call a third time, then. Is there any last person wishing to speak? I believe we've gone through the gallery. So seeing none, then, we will close the public hearing of city council. And thank you, everybody, for coming in and taking time out of your day to express your opinions. That's exactly what the public hearings are for, so again, appreciate it. So on that, it is just after nine o'clock now, so we're going to call our regular and our annual meeting of city council to order. With council's indulgence, we'll skip straight up to delegations because typically, we hold our delegations at nine o'clock. So we're going to vary the agenda and go straight to delegations. Our first delegation is Mr. Chad Anderson under 6-1, and I know Chad is here. There he is. Good morning, sir. So Chad's here from New Harvest Media, and he's going to talk to us a little bit about the "In the News" publication.
Good morning, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about this publication of yours. It has been nine years since I've had the opportunity to address council, so I'm trying to recall if there are actually any familiar faces since then. I don't think there are on council. So nine years ago, New Harvest Media was a one-man company based in an apartment. And today, there are three of us. We have three wives in total, not each. And we will, in the next day or two, have four kids amongst us. And in a few more weeks, five. It's been a three-baby year for New Harvest Media. So we're kind of a big economic developer in town. So we serve clients throughout the Auburn and British Columbia Peace Country, and a large percentage of our work is from outside of Dawson Creek. So we do have some economic benefit to the town in bringing that money into town, though, of course, we largely spend it on diapers. So that's your introduction to New Harvest. I'll tell you a little bit about the Community Profile and Investment Guide and "In the News" publications. You've been publishing these since, I think, 2004. We have just won the tender to take over their production over the next year. And up to now, the Community Profile and Investment Guide has been kind of the profile for Dawson Creek and gives you the information that economic developers and investors need to come to town. The "In the News" publication is a clipping service so that you have easy access, and as do those from outside the community, to the economic development and some other community news information that will inform people about just how busy and dynamic is the city of Dawson Creek at the moment. So those are the two publications. I'll just quickly hand out the first couple here that we have of the new... edition. Did you get one, Mike?
No.
I've read. So the paper insert there gives you an idea of, of the improvements that we're making. We're pretty excited about this, the adjustments and improvements that we're making to the publications, and, and we think we'll be excited about it as well. So on the left-hand side of your sheet there, it talks about what the, these documents have been up to now. The In the News publication was a monthly publication, updated 12 times per year, and the Community Profile and Investment Guide quarterly, so by my math, that makes four per year. On the right-hand side, you'll see that our updating frequency now, as we take these publications online, is going to basically continuous. So each morning, we'll be adding any updates as we find them, and so those documents will be at all times up-to-date. You won't have a month-old publication or a three-month-old publication, which in a city, as dynamic as Dawson Creek, obviously is, is not as beneficial as having something that's fully up-to-date. The other piece is that, up to now, there have been print publications, that was the primary piece, and then it was converted to PDF and posted online. But the, the lead publication was the paper edition. Now we are making basically the, the primary publication, the web version, with Twitter and Facebook connections as well. And then from that web version, at any time, we can produce a print version automatically. You can always print the most up-to-date version, and, but, but now the web version really is the primary document, because that really has been where the use has gone over the past few years. The number of copies that you've been printing has been declining over the past few years, so there, there are a few more trees that have been allowed to fight another day. And with us moving this onto the web primarily, that's just going to make it so much easier for people to access it online, and, and we expect to see the, the print copies decline even further. So we have now the online In the News and Community Profile, and that will be available as a web app, so His Worship can install it on his iPhone or iPad or Android device and take it to any meeting he's going to and have it at his fingertips without carrying another publication, as each of you will be able to do. And as I mentioned, the Facebook and Twitter connections as well. So the advantage is, again, it will be always current, available everywhere in its most current form, and easily accessible, because the web version will be the priority. Print is being reduced, and I'm happy to say the cost for, for this new and improved, much more accessible publication will be exactly the same as you were paying up to now on an annual basis. So no additional cost. So the Community Profile is available today at dawsoncreekprofile.ca. Visit it frequently. We'll, we'll be tracking your visits and seeing the use of the site as well. The In the News publication, we are waiting for just reconfirmed permissions from the various local media organizations that, that we are pulling from, just to be sure that they are very happy with us excerpting their articles. So we're waiting on some more permissions approvals there, but that'll be coming along shortly. And there is just one more thing. I'll bring it in, and we'll see if, if the mayor would like to give it a spin. Am I literally giving it a spin, Mayor? This is right. Yeah. Open door number one or two?
Yeah. Oh, wow. So, this is the iPad kiosk, which was kind of a bonus feature of our proposal. The web is available on a stick now, so, so, Mr. Mayor, help yourself, and you'll find the whole Community Profile on the publication, and you can, that's where you'd like to visit on the site.
So you have to date with a car show from this area?
That's right. That's right. It will be always current, and you can, is this web-based? It's, it is web-based, yeah. Yeah, so we're working with staff, obviously, to select the locations at which you want to place this, but of course, it will be available to trade shows or any, you know, events that you want to show that off.
So are you going to be actually standing at this for all the, I can watch it, that's right.
That's right. This will, it started great, but it'll be green in a few weeks, and I'll, I'll be there at the ready. Not quite, but nonetheless, we'll be able to have a look at it.
So this is going to be something that Reno can decide where he wants it?
That's right. It's available for you to use where you want it, and, and, I can confirm, I carried it from the other side of the parking lot. It is looking at American Stockings back to Terry at the conference, and I'm sure it's, does it fit his carry-on? It probably, probably. There is actually a case you could get for it in the.
Lots of, lots of room, I guess.
I love the banner.
Yes. Yeah, and you'll, you'll notice the Alaska highway sign here, if you're actually in use, you can see it.
I can see it from up there.
Yeah.
That's a neat idea.
Well, thank you very much.
So as I say, the In the News publication will be coming along shortly, as we get that all confirmed, but thank you very much for your time and the new business. We're thrilled to be working for the city since 2003, when we, I was here to launch the, at that time, new and improved city website. It has improved a couple more times since then, I'm happy to say, but thanks again, we appreciate it. Yeah, well, thanks a lot. Maybe just in case, is there any questions or comments from Council? Anybody have anything for Chad?
Good job there, Chad.
Yeah. Thanks a lot. Looking forward to seeing the, the new app and all that, too. Absolutely. Might have to get Terry to show me how to install it on my phone. It'll be very user-friendly, absolutely, so for all. Have to drag you into it, buddy. Thank you very much. Thanks so much. So we'll move on to 6-2 then. We have Kathleen Connolly from the Chamber of Commerce in attendance to give us an update on the Fall Fair Parade.
Good morning, everybody. So as some of you may or may not know, the Rotary Club agreed to take over the management of the parade, which has been really helpful for us. So we, currently, the Chamber of Commerce is currently taking registrations, which is what I wanted to share with everybody. So it can either be done through our website, or you can drop into our office. We'd love for you to do that and say hi. So it's Friday, August 10th. Lineup is at eight o'clock in the morning, as usual, and the theme is, this year is celebrating 90 years of agriculture. So we're really excited that we'll be doing it and assisting, and get your application form, registration form. That's it. That's all. It was just a reminder.
Excellent. So there's no fee again this year, I assume?
No fee. No, absolutely none. Judging what happened, it's the usual, the usual.
And lineup on 103rd, and are we doing the same parade route this year as last year?
We are. Everything is the same. If you go to our website, there's the registration form and then a map, so that it shows that the route is the very same.
Okay, so it's not changing back then at the mall? It's going to be ending at Northern Lights College?
That's correct. And the city has agreed to provide some of the, you know, the blocking of the roads and some staff for us, so thank you very much for that.
Hmm.
Great.
Any questions for Kathleen then?
Super. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for still helping organize it, and thanks to Rotary Club as well for making sure we have this.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Excellent. So we'll move into our last delegation then. We have Mr. O'Reilly and Garwa in attendance, or Mr. O'Reilly, anyone? Morning, Pat.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Carrying on with our development up there on the ski trails, and I've asked Council to support us once again, and because I want you to be satisfied with how you've spent your money in the past, I'll just make sure that you've seen what we put your money towards last year. You gave us $10,000 last time, and we put it towards this building project up there. And if you haven't been up there to have a look around, please do so. I did submit a report to Council some time ago, and I hope you've all seen this, but in the interest of bombarding you with it.
Yeah, and just so you, yeah, you are aware, the, all the information that you did give to us, we did receive last week, so we all have it and have read it.
Good. And the project that we're working on this year is, as I've indicated there, I won't belabor it, but we're removing stumps from the outside of the trail and taking down danger trees along the trail system. We had a great ski season last year. In the submission, I actually indicated that our membership increased again last year, but I checked with Jan Patterson, and she said, no, it remained stable. But part of our problem is, when there's no snow down here in town, people don't go up there. And the snow was great up there, but it was minimal, and our grooming equipment rattled off every stump along the trail. It was really hard on equipment. So we have to remove them. I don't know. I think all the information that you need is there in the package. I'll, I'll just take questions and let you carry on.
Sure. I guess my first question, Pat, did you apply, did you apply for, through our grants process this year? Because as you're probably aware, we've already approved the 2012 budget and where the money's spent for this year, so I'm just curious if.
Okay, and I, I thought we had met that, that deadline, but maybe not. And if we haven't, we'll apply for next year. I mean, simple as that. What we do is, we do what we can with the money we have each year, and if we're short, we do less. If we get more, we carry the project further.
Okay. Excellent. Is there any, Council Malkinson?
I'd like to take a tour up there. Just wanted to know what your phone number is.
It's 782-8796. Give me a call, and we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, and if you're going now, leave the skis at home.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? Council Kenny?
I'm not a question, just, you know, I just want to thank Pat for all his hard work up there at the hill and, and the ski club. I know that's my major source of recreation in the wintertime, and there's a lot of people up there that enjoy, enjoy those trails and enjoy that little piece of quiet away from town, and so thanks, and glad.
Yeah, and as was mentioned in your, your letter, I mean, it's not inside-city limits, it's not a city facility, it's a regional district facility, but a good portion of the people that go out and use it are from inside the city, so. Council Schuman?
Yeah, thanks, Pat. I want to just say that I really appreciated the presentation that you sent to us. It was interesting to me to see all of the donation, all of the donors that do contribute to. So it's not like you're just coming to the city and the regional district for funds, that you are getting your funds from a very diverse bunch of, of organizations and people. So I think that's, that's really positive, and, and as you know, I also love to spend time up there, and, and I think it's a great asset for our community, so thank you so much.
And it's a year-round facility. It's open whenever people want to go. There's a broader range of people using it all the time. This year, we've seen quite a few. Marilyn Parker and some of her horseback riders have been up there, and it sounds like they intend to use it more, and that's, that's fine with us.
Oh, just one more question. Will you be selling firewood from, from, I, I know, looking at all the beetle kill and different things that came down, if you're interested in selling the firewood, or is it available?
Well, we, yes, it is. A lot of people get, get firewood up there. We tried selling it, but you can't make any money selling firewood, at least we haven't been able to. But it's there available. If people want to cut firewood, they get ahold of, get ahold of me, and I'll arrange it. There's lots there.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, thanks.
Hey.
Excellent. Well, thanks very much. Oh, we have one more question, sorry. Council Wilder?
I've got a question, but I just thought it was unique that New Harvest Media is sitting behind you, so perhaps it could add to our page that there is snow on the ski trails, even if we don't have it here downtown.
Well, we had to cancel our school ski program last winter, because it, there was no snow on the school grounds where we could run, and it just didn't happen.
It's going to be a better year this year.
Excellent. Well, thanks for coming in, Pat. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So on that, we'll move back to the very beginning of our agenda for the annual meeting here, so we'll start at new in Council business. We do have a memo from Council Malkinson that he wrote up regarding the FCM and put in there for Council, Council's information. You wish to speak to it, Council?
I hope it's informative. I know that Mike and Cheryl were in attendance with, well, myself.
Sorry, I apologize. Can you just use the microphone, otherwise it doesn't get picked up.
I hope that you all found it informative. I had a very, very good, exciting time in Saskatoon, and I figured I would let yourselves and the public know exactly what we do when we fly off to Saskatoon to meet with all the mayors and councils from across the country.
Good, thank you. Is there any questions on, on Council put forward? Probably not from yourself, I know.
I prefer, I heard your report in the show.
It's just like his. It's just like Duncan's.
It was great, I enjoyed it.
And I just wanted to say, I appreciate you doing that, because it lets us know what the rest of us have up and coming.
That's all right. Yeah, because a couple of, two counselors haven't been yet, another year or two. There is, as Council Malkinson put, there is a recommendation just to receive for information or for discussion.
Is it necessary?
Technically, that's why I was just asking, never really done that before in the reports, but I'm not sure if it's, if.
Since I submitted, isn't Council, I don't know, I get, I moved that we received this report.
Sounds good. Council Kenny seconding. It's all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thanks for that. Anything else under Council business from anyone?
I've got lots of, lots of business, Your Worship.
Okay, Council Malkinson?
Lots of stuff to report. It's been a long month, and I'd like to update you all on what I've been up to, to, no matter how much Terry dislikes it. I'd like to report maybe on how things are improving at the library, Your Worship. I know that the staff member's been lost there a couple, a couple of weeks ago. I stopped in a couple of times and let them know that, oh, we're certainly supportive and willing to lend a hand in any capacity that we can while they're making it through the difficult time. Jenny's been back to work. Over the last couple of weeks, things are improving there. We've got the Watershed Research Forum going on this week. Public should attend that, because it's going to be a very good event, informative event. It's taking place at the Energy House, I think it's seven o'clock tomorrow. Gee, what else?
You're flipping burgers, more importantly, I saw, too.
Yeah, yeah. Who was it? Reg was very interested in myself doing that. Oh, I had the opportunity to join the Legion a couple of weeks ago. You all should join the Legion, too. The car show was a very, very good event. Congratulations to them for putting that on. And maybe we ought to send a letter to the organization thanking them for their work. They had a record-breaking year, and the organizer said that there's about 200 new cars in, in town here, so I was quick to remind him that he had the Council of Dawson Creek to thank for the low taxes and economic development issues. The powwow was very good, and I'd also like to recommend that we send a letter, or at least have a ceremony for the opening of that bridge that the oilmen have built. Maybe a ribbon-cutting or something like that. Any thoughts on that?
Well, we could probably talk to the oilmen. I mean, as it is.
Their project.
Their project, and that typically, we don't interfere too much, if that's something that they, you know, typically what happens with a lot of these non-for-profit groups, no different than the Rotary Walking Trail, a lot of these community groups spend a lot of time, a lot of money, and do great work for the community, and they're not waiting for the pat, pat on the back, and they're just, it's just there, but I know we have.
I think we have some recognition.
Yeah, we have done a few things, but it's up to you.
Yeah, sure, sure. I suppose maybe that's it for now, Your Worship.
Okay. Thanks for the updates. Anything else from any counselor? No? So seeing none, we'll move on to minutes. We have four sets of minutes to be adopted. Council Aaron McFadden and Schuman, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? Was there any business arising from any of the minutes from anyone? Was there any business arising from any of the minutes from anyone? So seeing that, we'll move into correspondence. The first letter of correspondence is from the South Peace Community Resources Society. They're asking for swim passes and bus passes. I don't see any quantities or any specific ask there or anything. Councill Schuman?
I would move that we support them with some swim passes and bus passes, but I do have a question for staff as to what we supported them in the past. They mentioned a gift last year, and so I was curious to know what that was.
Through Your Worship, last year, Spicers was giving five $10 certificates. It was for their Women's Day.
Yeah.
For what?
Their Women's...
Their Women's Day event. We gave them five $10 passes.
So they also mentioned that they had partnered with...
I'm sure last year, we gave bus passes as well. You have that information, Greg? Or did you show it?
Yeah, I did. We have, I didn't look into the details of the charge, but it's about $1,200 that went through the sponsorship budget line. So if this was the same partnership with, you know, the other people that they did, that was the value of the transaction last year.
To them specifically?
Yes.
But we didn't know if it was just from this? Ask if it was a combination of a few different things? It was just that?
Well, it was to do with the programming with different... It covered different programming. The Youth Connect, there's three that they mentioned in the information that I looked at. So I think it's similar to what they're asking for this year.
Yeah, so I would move that we at least sort of match what we did last year, if it's in our budget. And with the swim passes, I know, like, our facility is open and staffed anyways, so I would like to see some of the passes also. I can't say specifically numbers. I think if we were to match what we did last year, it might be nice if we have that in the budget.
Sure. So before it's seconded, I have, Jim just came back in with some information.
Through Your Worship, there were two initiatives last year. One was with the Reconnect Get a Lift program. That was the gift certificates. The other was provision of passes to caregivers. That's about the $1,200 item. My understanding is that this request is for the caregivers again.
Yeah, thanks. It was one of the things that they spoke to us about was the caregivers are constantly trying to get a lot of the members out to the pool, get some exercise, get them out. And they were just saying, is it possible that we could basically sponsor the caregivers who are volunteering, for lack of better words, doing this? Did they apply through the grants process? Because this is not a sponsorship, and we've already done our grants for the year. I'm just kind of curious.
No, I believe the request was received about this same time last year, after the close of the grant consideration, and it was put to sponsorship for that reason.
Because this is technically a grant what they're asking for?
Yes, it is.
So Councill Schuman still has a motion on the floor?
Yeah. My motion is to contribute what we contributed last year. I see this as sort of an effort to establish that safety net in our community a little bit.
So is that a sponsorship, then?
I don't know what we want to call it.
Shall we?
You can put it through the same budget line. We have $24,000 left in the budget. And in the grants and fee-for-service policy, there's extraordinary grants up to $1,000 that you can do at your discretion. So there's lots of opportunities here if you so choose to support the initiative. It's just the value that we need.
So I would move that we support them to the tune of whatever we supported them last year, the $1,200 or $1,500 or whatever it was that we supported them last year.
Okay. And Councill McFadden was seconding that. Questions from council? Comments? Councill Malkinson?
Worship, is this time-sensitive? And just, when do their programs start? Are they, is it a September to fall thing?
I would probably say it's an annual thing, but...
Annual thing, all year round?
Through Your Worship, they're not much different than our various programming. There's a summertime lull, and then they start, the bulk of their programs, when school
Any other comments? So all those in favor, then? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Five two is a letter from the Dawson Creek Exhibition Association. This is the requests for the 2012 Greatest Show in the Peace. Councill Kenny?
I suppose that we receive these requests, approve them?
Yeah, we forward them to staff. I think we would just forward them to staff to follow through with, approve the time. Now, this typically, I think, is stuff that we do every single year to help them along, but it's usually a formal request that comes forward, just so it's documented, what we're doing to assist the fall fair.
Through Your Worship, these are the normal requests that you have approved every year. They're already built into your budget?
No, I thought so. It's just the date changed. So Councill Kenny seconded by Councill Wilbur. Any questions? Councill Schuman?
Sorry, what's the date change?
Oh, I was just being facetious. It's the same request as every year, just change it to the next year's date. Any other comments, then? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Five three is a letter from Premier Christie Clark, and this is regarding meeting requests, if we so wish, for the, at the UBCM convention in September. Councill McFadden?
For information?
Seconded by Councill Kenny. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Five four is a letter from the BC Government Services Employees Union regarding the BCLDB liquor branch. They're looking for support. Councill McFadden?
For information?
Thank you. Seconded by Councill Wilbur. Discussion? Councill Schuman?
Well, I was thinking that we might want to put a letter of support forward.
Typically, I would have to vote against that. Typically, we do not interfere with other unions or other levels of government in their negotiations, nor would we want them to interfere when we're negotiating with our local union. That's my stand on that.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, thinking about the local families and the jobs down there. So if that's not what we do, then that's not what we do.
Jim?
Through Your Worship, the, my understanding from the media reports and from the RFP that was posted on BC Bid, no local jobs would be affected. This is not the privatization of local liquor stores like the one we have. This is the warehousing and distribution facilities?
Down in Kamloops and...
In Kamloops and in Vancouver.
Yes. Thank you. So all those in favor, then? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Five five is a letter from Taylor Gold Panning Event Coordinators, and just letting us know about the championship invitation there. Councill Wilbur?
I move that we accept for information.
Okay. Seconded by Councill Schuman. Any discussion? I'm not able to make it because I'm already booked that day. If anybody else wishes to go up, there's information on there on how to reply if you're able to go and represent your city and have some fun up there. But I'm already booked at other meetings. Yeah, they always do it on the August long weekend.
Gris Fest.
Gris Fest, yes. And we also have the, all the army vehicles coming through town as well, but I'm booked up with them for two days.
Is that when that happens, the long weekend?
Yeah.
It's pretty quick, you know? Or is it the one after? Anyway, I have to check my calendar.
No, it is.
So for info for now, anyway. So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And five six is a letter from the Parade Coordinator, Brent Telefer, and this is for the parade as well up in Taylor. Giving us the information, so.
I move we receive it for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Councill Schuman. Any questions? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Five seven is a letter from Astral Media from the Dawson Creek office here, request for support for the Canadian Radio/Television, CRTC, for the application that they have. Councill McFadden?
I would move that we grant the request of the South Peace Secondary Kids.
Sure. How about we do that when we do five eight? We're on five seven right now, but if you'd like to grant that we send the letter...
I must be having a seniors moment. They can handle it if it's possible, Councill. I think it's the same.
At least you're talking to the right councillor that time, so. So we are on five seven, which is looking for a letter of support for Astral Media. Councill Parzl?
Just information. I find this an unusual request. Again, I mean, I agree with what you said concerning the PCGU. Is this somewhat like that, in your opinion?
This not. We've done things like this before. This is a little different as well. The CRTC usually goes out, reaches out into the communities when there's purchases or changes in anything to do with radio and television. Just look for the community's kind of feedback. I know we did this with Shaw. We did it with Astral Media before when it was, they changed names a few times. So we have done this before.
Okay. Move that we send a letter of support.
So seconded by Councill Wilbur. Any questions, then? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. We have five eight, a letter from the Dawson Creek South Peace Secondary School, and this is looking for a small booth at Rotary Lake. I was waiting for a seniors moment, but maybe not. Councill Malkinson?
I move we accommodate the request, Your Worship.
Councill McFadden, would you like to second that?
Send the motion.
Sure. And anyone wish to speak to that, probably? Councill Parzl?
At one of the many Mile Zero Parts Society meetings I attend, this request was received. So the Mile Zero Parts Society is very supportive of accommodating this, but this is something the city has to give final say on.
Yes.
The secondary school is raising money for a basketball trip, and they want to set up not just for the regular sort of things that happen at Rotary Lake, but also for the two special events that are planned this summer. One, Beat the Heat, and the other one's called Pull the Plug. So I think it's good that the kids are showing this initiative, and we should try to accommodate.
Definitely. Any other comments? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Five nine is a letter from Charlene Dawkins regarding the recent zoning of Cal Tire. Councill Schuman?
For information.
Thank you. Seconded by Councill Wilbur. Discussion? Councill Parzl?
I read this letter with interest. I think there was some considerations there that I think we need to reflect on. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Next letter is five ten from Mr. Eggersen regarding the same issue with Cal Tire. Councill Malkinson?
Move that we, I'm not sure the process of it, but move that we respond to Mr. Eggersen's asks in a letter.
Okay, there was, they're not numbered, so I don't know, half a dozen or more questions there that he had, most of which, I believe, have explanations that staff can submit to you. Is that what you're suggesting? Staff respond to this?
Well, he's asking the questions of council, but yeah, there are some obvious ones that are enshrined in policy and are apparent, I suppose. I can't load it right here for some reason.
I don't know, it won't either.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, maybe we could do that. That's my motion, though, if anybody wants to second.
Sure. Seconded by Councill Kenny. Any discussion?
What are we doing here?
He wants to have a letter go to Mr. Eggersen with the answers to his questions that he has in his letter. Jim, is that sufficient enough of a motion, or is there something you'd like to address there?
In the event, I, because it's 63-some pages that are all JPEG, basically, it's going to take a while to load. I haven't seen it. If there are questions there that the answer's not contained in policy or in council's motions, I'm going to have to bring them back to council as a proposed answer for council's approval before that can be sent.
Majority of the large file there is pictures of everybody else's Cal Tires. That's why it's so large and hard to load. Okay, any other questions, then? Councill Kenny?
Not to say, it was a bit of an eye-opener, looking at the state of the surroundings of the Cal Tire. And when you look at the other communities and how it appears in the other communities, it's an eyesore. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, there's only so much we can do around, as long as they're conducting appropriately within the zoning. But the one question I have, maybe before we vote on this, I'm not sure if, Jim, if you have the answer, but I know I thought we looked into it. The, both letters referred to it, the fact that they're using the city's laneway. Now, is that no longer a laneway? Because I drove down, looked at it, and you can't drive down the lane because of all of their stuff there. Have they purchased that from the city, or is that still...
No. My understanding, Your Worship, is it's still a laneway and that there is enforcement action underway?
Okay, so bylaw has already following, is following up on that, to my best knowledge.
That's my understanding, but as you know, I've got a country for it.
Okay. Because that's the one that kind of jumps out at me, so. Okay, so no other questions, then? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. We've done delegations, so we'll move on to reports. First report, seven one, is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is for the Dawson Creek Annual Report. Councill Wilbur?
I make a motion that report number 12-153 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Dawson Creek Annual Report for 2011 be received, and further that the annual report be approved as presented.
Excellent. Seconded by Councill Kenny. Any questions? Comments? No? Aside from just saying thanks to staff and Brenda and everybody, I know it's, seems like one thing blends into the other. I know there's been a lot of time spent on the annual report, so thank you very much. I'm very happy, and I've received compliments, too, from some of the pictures that were used and just the way it promotes the community and highlights some of the awards we've won and everything as well, so. I think staff did a great job putting that together. Anything else?
I was just going to say that.
Okay. So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven two is report 12-164 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Incana Event Center and the Energy Conference. Councill Schuman?
So I would move that the recommendation, I'm scrolling down to it, that report number 12-164 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Incana Event Center Energy Conference be received. Further, that council approve the use of the Incana Event Center for the Energy Conference September 19th to 21st, 2012, as a rent-free event, as per Section 7.4, used by the city of the pre-opening service and management agreement between the City of Dawson Creek and Global Spectrum Facility Management Alpine.
Excellent. Seconded by Councill Kenny. Any questions? No? So all those in favor, then? Opposed? It's carried. That's right. Seven three is 12-167 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is regarding our Dawson Creek Airport Sustainability Report. Councill Kenny?
I move the recommendation that report number 12-167 from the Director of Corporate Administration be received, and further that the 2012 Passenger Leakage Study prepared by Otegas Management Limited on June 20th, 2012, be approved for use by the airport manager to market the Dawson Creek Airport. Further, that the transfer of the Flight Service Station building from Mav Canada to the City of Dawson Creek be approved, and further that a consultant be hired to complete a governance review on the Dawson Creek Airport.
Seconded by Councill Schuman. Questions? Questions, comments? Counselor McFadden?
I have a problem with number three about this governance review. I don't think we need to have, perform a committee to give place to run the airport. I think we're way beyond that. I think this report that we're doing, what we're doing is fine, and Mr. Darby, the thesis of Mr. Schuman, counsel, I think are pretty competent to run the airport. So, I'm not that certain that we need somebody to come in that's going to tell us we need to form a committee. That's how I read it. I may, I was far better this morning than Counselor Schuman, but maybe I'm not reading this quite rightly, so I'd like to hear about that.
I think you put it across to you, Counselor Schuman.
Yeah.
I was just expressing to him that I thought that, to Counselor McFadden, that I thought that having someone like Jerry Berry come in and help us through this might produce other ideas, maybe not necessarily around forming a group to run the airport.
I think there, I mean, there are people out there within the community with no experience who have been on airport boards for years and who have accomplished nothing. I would not want to see those folks back on an airport governance board.
Which I believe is probably why staff put forward the recommendation, because if, as you know, we got rid of the Airport Advisory Committee about five years ago for that exact reason. It was four or five people that had opinions on how to better the airport, but it wasn't actually coming to any fruition. It was being left in the hands mostly of Jim with our airport manager.
Yes.
And one of the suggestions that's been coming forward is, do we need to have a community group or committee to help promote, work with? You know, that's just been the discussion. And we didn't want to go down that road. Council hasn't approved that of having any meetings or doing anything like that yet, because we haven't decided if that's what we want to do. So, I think that's why staff put forward, if this is something you want to consider, maybe Jerry or somebody comes forward and kind of leads us through that process. If we feel that we don't ever want to have a governance model, and we're just going to leave it to the airport manager to report to Jim and to council, then I agree, there's no point going through, down that road. But I know, Jim, that maybe the cobwebs are still up there from the vacation, but do you, do you have any insight on this one?
Yes, your worship, you had already directed staff that you were receiving and approving of the Dawson Creek Airport Sustainability Report?
Yes.
So, when you look at their recommendations, their short-term recommendations, which were to be proceeded on, first, one of the recommendations that they had was that you look at, I'm just going to get it, is the recommendation of the consulting team that a detailed governance review of the airport in context of the City of Dawson Creek be prepared. While the current airport is owned by the city and the council is the de facto airport committee, it may be more appropriate to have a committee that includes non-elected officials. Individuals with experience in the aviation field will bring a different perspective to the operation of the airport. However, a governance review will look at options and consider the resources available locally. So, the recommendation in front of you is to proceed with that recommendation, and then you would be looking at everything from maintaining status quo to, at the other end, regional airport authority that has no involvement from the city, or minimal involvement from the city.
Yeah.
We don't feel that we have in-house expertise to go over that full range of options. That's why we've made the recommendation we had.
Excellent, thanks for that. Counselor Parzal?
Thank you. I will be voting in favor of this. I'm very concerned about the future of the Dawson Creek Airport. I think it's cost the taxpayers a lot to maintain, and I think that we do need to see what we, to give it our best shot from the point of view of getting a group of people together, possibly who can be cheerleaders for this airport. I'm not sure what happened to assist this new carrier get established. I've asked questions, I've been asked questions, and I can't get any coherence or sense of what happened to promote this carrier in the region. But it seems to me that, you know, this is a South Peace Regional Airport, and that's how I view it. It isn't just a Dawson Creek Airport. I think, you know, people from Tumblr Ridge, Chetwind, for example, and some places just inside Alberta, I think have a keen interest in this airport improving, if you like, its offerings from more carriers or more frequent travel. And I think there's, we need to explore this, as Jim Juve just said, shoot just said, the number of options, and we need to explore it, and we need to engage, I think, not just people from Dawson Creek, but I do think we need to promote this as a, I'm going to call it a South Peace Regional Airport. And I think there's other stakeholders, the regional district, District of Tumblr Ridge, District of Chetwind, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't wish to pre-guess what might be said, but I am very interested in trying to broaden the base that supports this airport. And a governance model may, may work, a cheerleading group, I don't know what it would be, and I think we need to just follow the original course, which was to have a study done.
Thank you. Counselor Kenny?
Yeah, I want to add to that, that the South Peace Economic Development Commission, that the commission did approve funds towards the recommendations of that, of that report. And in forming a committee, I think it would be wise to include representation from those communities, because having the whole regional support behind it would, I think, carry more, carry more, bring more, more to the table. So, in that report, I guess, I don't know when you would do that, but I would recommend that maybe we should include people from the other communities.
See, a lot, okay, Jim?
Yes, your worship, it's important that you guys don't jump out ahead of the process and settle on a committee and its membership without examining what your various options are for that.
Thank you, yeah, because I was just going to say, if we go through this process, one of the recommendations might be that we don't even have a committee.
Hmm.
You know, that's why we have to, you know, right now, the City of Dawson Creek taxpayers are the only ones that are funding this airport.
That's right.
So, that's one of the things that has to be considered here, too.
The regional district should be.
Yeah. So, Counselor Malkinson?
Worship, this process seems a little bit straightforward to me, you know? If we, well, I suppose it's a governance review on the Dawson Creek Airport, not necessarily the forming of a committee, but I do think that committee, an advisory committee, would be good for the airport. It's all about having a broad amount of voices to, you know, promote cheerlead, like Mr. Parzal spoke of. I'm just not sure that hiring a consultant will tell us a whole lot of useful information. I don't know. It doesn't seem like a good way to spend money, and I think that maybe if we follow the same process that we did for the Economic Development Task Force, which is, you know, advertising, looking for people for possible advisory committee would be a better way to go.
Counselor Kenny?
I think, I believe that we do need a consultant to take us through this process, because the consultant brings, brings it in, and he unpackages everything, and gets everybody's thoughts, and we become more creative with how we come to a conclusion, and where, if we're all sitting there in a room, like, look at us now, you know, we're all looking for a direction on where to go. And so, when you have someone with that skill set that can sit there and bring these thoughts and that together, it's very valuable.
Thank you. I assume it's the same thing with Counselor Schuman?
Absolutely, I'll be supporting this recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, no, and just like we heard from staff, I mean, we don't have the in-house expertise to do something like this, so if it's going to be done, then we need to have a consultant come in and really help us lead us through this. Counselor Malkinson?
I am in favor of the approach, your worship, and just so I don't have to appear like a rebel and seem like I'm going against everything here, I'm just going to try and introduce an amendment to strike out that consultant be hired right here. I don't know whether you can get that seconded or not, but I'm going to try.
Well, that changes the intent of the actual motion. It's on the floor, so my thought would be, you'd actually have to vote against it.
All right, so, I move that we strike out the third recommenda, oh, third recommendation of the recommendation, the third part.
Okay, so again, I believe that changes.
No, that would be in order, your worship, if it's seconded and if it's carried.
Okay, so it should strike out the, you better be specific on what you want to say.
That we strike out after approved. That's my motion, your worship.
Now, let's be clear what we're going to do.
Sorry for the trouble.
So, after approved, so you're saying the recommendation just be that the administration be received, for the two thousand and twelve passenger leakage study be prepared by Tagus Management on June twentieth be approved? And that's it?
No.
No, and then the flight, or the airport manager?
That's why I want to make sure, so which approved are you talking about?
The last approved.
The last approved, so further that.
There's three recommendations there.
So, you're saying get rid of the further that.
The last one.
A consultant be hired to complete the governance review.
That's right.
Okay, so that is his motion to strike the, the last portion, so.
Is there a seconded? No?
Well, I'll call for that.
Sorry, sorry. I'm just waiting for it.
Is there a seconded?
Well, you need a seconded, don't you?
We need a seconded, otherwise it dies.
To vote for it.
He's asking to remove that we hire a consultant.
Yeah.
And we need a seconded for that, and then you vote on the amendment, then we vote on the original motion.
And if he doesn't have a seconded?
Then it dies on the floor.
Doesn't matter.
So, is there a seconded?
That's okay. I can handle that.
Counselor McFadden, you're seconding?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so the motion is seconded, so now we'll vote on the amendment. So, the amendment on the motion is to strike out the last there, further that, so that would be that we do not hire a consultant as per the recommendation. So, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it's defeated, so the motion stays as original? Any further questions on that?
It's a lot more confusing than I expected.
This question we put as original.
Yeah, thank you. So, now, just for clarity, you're voting on the original motion as presented by staff, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor McFadden, but it is carried? Thank you. Let me think there for a second, thanks.
I'm sorry.
Don't apologize, you have the right to do that.
It was, it was a lot more complicated, turned out a lot more complicated than I expected it to be.
But on that, before we move on to seven four, just, there was not very much discussion, but highlighting the report itself, that the study that showed how many people, how many tens of thousands of people from this South Peace region go to other airports, and so, which is one of the reasons why we were saying that we need to continue championing. There's opportunity there, just trying to figure out how to grasp it, so. Counselor Parzal?
Well, I think there is opportunity. I mean, I hate to mention the community north of us, but.
Taylor?
No, not Taylor, just a little north of Taylor. But, you know, I really believe if you can empower people and you, you can focus their energy and enthusiasm in a proper way, I mean, look, I was, I go to Fort St. John quite frequently, and there's a lot of buzz around the work that was done in preparing their material for their presentation to WestJet, which was led by politicians and business people and folks, and putting together their visual effects for that presentation. So, to me, I look forward to trying to get a lot of people engaged in really being cheerleaders for this airport, because unless we improve the service, by that I'm talking about the frequency of flights and where they go to, and the numbers of passengers, or we get some financial assistance, whether from regional district or other areas, I mean, because this does really, this airport can be appealing to the other communities because of just proximity of travel. So, I really think we need to give it our best shot.
I think you'd get six people agreeing with you in the room, so. Let's move on to seven four, which is twelve one sixty-eight from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is regarding the Economic Development Task Force. Counselor Wilbur?
I make a motion that report number twelve dash one six eight from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Economic Development Task Force be received, further that the City of Dawson Creek Economic Development Task Force be formed, consisting of the mayor, one counselor appointed by the mayor, and the following community members appointed for a three-year term. Kathleen Conley, Alyssa Holloboff, Samantha, Jabo, Kit Fast, is that Michelle Dionne?
Michael.
Michael Dionne, sorry, Dr. William Brook and Kevin Curriata.
Excellent, seconded by Counselor Schuman. And any comments? Counselor Kenny?
I think in reference to the, to the people representing the committee and the fact that there's not representation from the oil and gas, ag industry and retail sports, I don't think that's an issue, because I think that would come into the, it would come into play when you're opening up a package and review, you would invite these stakeholders to come, so.
Okay, excellent, thanks. Any other comments then? Aside from just thanking these people for putting their names forward and willing to help, and this is another great way to just have the community engaged? Counselor Malkinson?
I recall reading the, you know I like history, your worship, I recall reading the Economic Development Strategy from two thousand and one that I managed to thumb through, and I remember reading the names at the back of it, just an exhaustive list of names, people that were involved in the process, and I just want to say that hopefully we can get more people involved in that economic development process in the future, and hopefully this is just a starting point.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, and I know the times were different in two thousand and one, because there was no economic development in town, so everybody was pretty involved trying to figure out how to promote that. Now, it's more of trying to deal with what we have and sustain it, so. Any other comments? So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Seven five is twelve one seventy-six from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the policy review. Counselor Parzal?
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number twelve dash one seven six from the Director of Corporate Administration be received. Further, the policy review list from staff be approved, further that staff be directed to incorporate additional amendments received from council into the policy review and present a policy review work plan for consideration at a future meeting.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any comments? Jim?
Yes, through your worship, giving, given our compressed summer schedule, it would be very useful if counselors who have any particular policy that they'd like to either propose amendment to or propose for discussion, because counselors can certainly say, I'd just like to talk about this policy for clarity, that we receive those in the next month so that we could bring you a work plan at the next meeting, because that work plan would have to start pretty much at the meeting after that. So, it'd be wonderful if, Counselor Parzal has already given us such a list, if every other counselor has an opportunity to have a look at the policy manual and flag what they'd like discussed, that would be very useful.
Excellent, yes, thanks for that, yeah. Brenda put in a date to try to shoot for of August third in this, so let's highlight that for council. Okay, seeing nothing else then? So, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. So, we'll move on to seven six, which is twelve one seventy-five, and this is from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is the Consolidated Budget Variance Report. Counselor Schuman?
The report number, I move the recommendation, the report number twelve one seventy-five from the Chief Financial Officer regarding June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve Consolidated Budget Variance Report be received for information.
Excellent, thanks. Counselor Malkinson is seconding. Any questions? Counselor Wilbur?
I just have one. What was the renovations done at the airport for the new air carrier?
I think that was just the manager preparing to have the kiosk set up for the thing. I mean, that wasn't the only thing that made it high at this time of the year, it was just something that was out of the ordinary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Seven seven is report twelve one seventy-three from the Deputy Director of Community Services, and this is for the Curling Rink Energy retrofit. Were you trying to jump ahead to do this one, Counselor Malkinson?
Yes, your worship.
Okay.
I move that report number twelve dash one seventy-three from the Director of Community Services regarding the Curling Rink Energy retrofit tender, two thousand and twelve twenty, be received, and further that Ron or Armoc Electric Limited be awarded the contract for the Curling Rink Energy retrofit for the price of forty-two thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, fifty cents plus taxes. Further, that staff be directed to complete the work using a combination of capital and operational funding.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Schuman. And questions? Counselor McFadden?
Why does this have to cover development because of the brace? Wouldn't that be more?
That's correct, your worship. It's over the twenty-five thousand dollar limit for department heads.
Counselor Schuman?
I was certainly impressed with the figures that the energy usage at the Curling Rink will go from thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight watts to eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight watts, just by updating our technology used. That's amazing, and I certainly support this.
Jim?
Through your worship, that is amazing, and it's a wonderfully progressive forward step, but the reason the big savings are there is that we've neglected to do anything for a very long time there. So, you know, the similar savings are not available in other buildings that have had more regular attention.
It's still good.
Still good, exactly, thanks for that. Any other comments? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Seven eight is report twelve one fifty-six from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for development variance, sorry, development permit application for Air Liquide at twenty-six oh eight Ninety-second Avenue. Counselor Parzal?
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number twelve dash one five six from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, redevelopment permit number twelve dash sixteen for Air Liquide Canada be received. Further, staff be directed to proceed with a notification process and authorizing Prince Appel, P L E, the issuance of development permit number twelve dash one six to Air Liquide Canada for the development of Phase Two expansion, involving the construction of an additional twenty-five ton per day to the liquid nitrogen plant, including a main building extension with all processing equipment, a cold box, four nitrogen tanks with one thousand ton storage capacity, one scale, and to relocate the trailer parking to the rear of the property at two six zero eight Ninety-second Avenue, upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period, and receive a verification of the renewed one hundred thousand dollar financial security.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Questions, comments? Jim? Oh, oh, sorry, Counselor Schuman.
My question is just. My question is just around the whole business of them utilizing the natural gas power generator. Can we put any conditions that that will definitely go away once the sufficient power is available or, I mean, maybe we can't. I'm sure they would definitely move over to hydro and not continue to use the natural gas, but that was the only thing that stood out for me was that point.
Okay. Jim?
Through you, your worship, that was actually what I was going to mention as well. As you know, we took on intervenor status in the Dawson Creek Transmission Line Project Decap as a result of what appeared to council to be unacceptable delays in the process. Just update you on that, there was an oral hearing held last week that was specific to First Nation issues. That's been concluded. The panel now says they have the information they require and it's expected that there will be a decision very shortly on the Decap line. At the time that that line, until that line goes in, Air Liquide has no option to use hydro rather than natural gas. After that line is available and we're still, even if we have an approval, we're still eighteen months out probably from that reality, it will become a question of which power source is most economical. You're better placed to know than I am, but I believe there's probably a reason why people use hydro, not natural gas generators and it probably hasn't got to do with emissions, it's probably got to do with price points. So, I would assume that the economics would drive the changeover to hydro, but at the moment, you wouldn't place that condition on anyone else. If someone felt it was more economical, private developer felt it was more economical to use natural gas generation than hydro, the current legislative regime in Dawson Creek would allow them to do so.
Thank you. And I would assume to get natural gas there, they're going to be having to do a significant capital investment in order to start this. Not sure how that'll play out, but I guess that's their business, business case, we'll say.
Thanks.
Okay. Any further questions then? So, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. That moves us to report, sorry, seven nine, report twelve one sixty-nine from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for development permit at seven oh five one hundred A Avenue. Councilor Kenny?
I move the recommendation that report number twelve one six nine from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development permit number twelve fifteen for Charles Potrats be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process and authorized to issue development permit twelve fifteen to Charles Potrats, I hope I'm saying that properly, for the construction of a twelve hundred square foot shop upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of the required financial security in the amount of seventy-five million dollars.
Okay. Seconded by Councilor Parslow. And comments? No? So, seeing none? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Seven nine is report twelve one, sorry, seven ten is report twelve one sixty-one from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a variance permit for KTS truck repair at thirteen forty-one Ninety-third Avenue. Councilor Malkinson?
Move that report number twelve dash one six one from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit number twelve dash zero seven for KTS truck repair, Stephen Reynolds, at thirteen forty-one Ninety-third Avenue be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the notification process for development variance permit number twelve dash zero seven.
Okay. Seconded by Councilor Kenny. Councilor Schuman?
Through your worship to staff, this fellow, he was aware of the, the whole business of where he could put this development before he started pouring concrete, was he?
Well, I knew he applied for a building permit, he was told what the setbacks were supposed to be.
Through your worship, I'm sure Kevin can...
Yes, through your worship, that's exactly right. He did come in to get a permit. He did speak with the building inspectors. He was aware of the setbacks and the duty to call for inspections prior to pouring concrete. When he had the building formed, I was made aware of that it looked a little bit close. So, I had the building inspectors go, by the time they went out, he had already poured concrete.
So, he did not call, if I understand the report, he did not call for the inspection prior to pouring like he was supposed to?
That is correct. He did not.
So, so we don't know if there's rebar in there or anything else per code?
That's correct.
Councilor Wilbur?
I mean, it's, I went and looked at it, it's in line with the old, I'll say garages or sheds that are down that alleyway, but my other concern is we keep seeing these variances that lead on to our, whether you want to call them fire lanes or alleyways, does this cause a problem for our fire department if all of a sudden we're encroaching in on our alleyways? So, I mean, if you look down the alley, it's in line with what's existing there from before. However, I'm concerned that he knew before he poured and went and had did it anyways. And I guess my other concern is if we continue to do this, what's going to happen to our fire lanes and alleyways in our community for future reference or future usage?
Sure. Jim?
Through your worship, these are site-specific. Every single situation is different. In some cases, we have recommend, I mean, recently you turned down a development variance in a residential area because in that specific site, what was being requested didn't appear to you to be acceptable. This particular site, because of some of the issues Council Wilbur is talking about and because just the corner location doesn't pose what we see as particularly significant risks for firefighting purposes. It would not be our preference that people would ignore their obligation to call for inspection, but the file notes that for subsequent purchasers that that foundation is not inspected. And it's not our, obviously not our preference to bail somebody out when they have not followed the guidelines. On the other hand, those regulations exist for a purpose. In this situation, we don't see significant risk from the, from the location that the actual footings are in and so we can't in good conscience recommend that we require this person to go to the expense of ripping out their existing foundation and moving it when our recommendation, if they had come in ahead of time and asked for this variance, would have still been that you grant it because we don't see that there's significant risk.
Okay. Councilor Wilbur, you still want?
I just wanted to add on, on the happy thought, he's done tons of improvement on this property and the sidewalk along that street was atrocious and he's, by making it his driveway, has repaired that sidewalk, so I'm not against it, I just wanted to know where we sat with our fire lanes, but thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? My question on process though, if council approves the recommendation, it goes to the notification area, but then it still doesn't get, that's not necessarily means it's approved because we, if people in the area still come forward and say, you know, because I mean, I have a real problem with it myself because, you know, here we are, we have a building in the department for a reason, people apply for permits for a reason, they're told where they're supposed to build for a reason, do it their way and then come and ask for forgiveness afterwards when they're caught. The ones down the alley will be having to have variance permits if there was ever changes there because, but they're grandfathered because it's older. So, you know, I understand and I appreciate the staff then saying that they don't see a problem, I just hate sending the message out there that, you know, why even bother applying? Okay. Any other comments then? So, all those in favor? Opposed? Cheryl and I, but it's carried. Okay. Seven eleven is report twelve one seventy-two from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a development permit application for West Castle Developments at ninety-seven hundred Third Street. Councilor Schuman?
Sorry. I move the recommendation that report number twelve one seven two from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development permit number twelve dash nineteen from West Castle Developments, Dawson Hills be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development permit twelve dash nineteen and authorized to issue development permit twelve dash nineteen to West Castle Developments for the residential sixty-nine lot and commercial one lot subdivision developed at ninety-seven hundred Third Street upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of the site and landscaping plans and verification of the fifteen thousand dollar financial security.
Seconded by Councilor Wilbur. Yeah, this is a great proposal for that area. I'm crossing my fingers, we've seen a few, I'm crossing my fingers that the timing is right now in the community and economically to actually see this one come to fruition. Councilor McFadden?
It's a significant undertaking, but has this, has this organization not done this before, made a bunch of applications and done stuff and then nothing ever happened or am I mistaken?
I thought it was a different owner now, but I could be mistaken. Is it still the same person, Jim?
Through your worship, we believe it's a different partnership. The title is still held, I believe, by the same company that you've had proposals for in the past. It's not unusual for developments to go through these kind of phases. We've seen it on both of your developments that are now active, the one north of your street, whatever street that is, and the one to the west of the forestry building. Both of them have gone through several iterations before there was a plan that met the market. What holds these developments up is the, not your approval process, you've approved several things in both locations, it's when the market's ready to purchase the lots that are, that would be created.
Okay. Councilor Schuman?
And my question is about the commercial. Are they thinking like a corner store or something like that or do we know? We don't know.
Through your worship, they haven't been specific on the exact commercial use that they might have a question for.
But, yeah, and the very first time they came in here, seven years ago, whatever it was, they, that was actually their thought was maybe a corner store, laundromat kind of thing for the area, but they also said they, you know, leave it open and see what would work. I believe right now they just said leave it as kind of a green space until it's determined.
Yeah, I would really, I really like that idea that there could be a commercial corner store type thing, so it's great.
Okay. Any other comments? So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Next one is seven twelve at twelve one seventy-seven from the Director, Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the award of tender for the speculative pond berm rehabilitation. Councilor Parslow?
I'd like to move the rec, that report number twelve dash one seven seven from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re-award of tender for the fatultative pond berm rehabilitation be received. Further, the tender for the fatultative pond berm rehabilitation be awarded to Four Evergreen Resources LP for the bid price of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars excluding taxes.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Wilbur. Any comments? Councilor Malkinson?
Your worship, I apologize, but I don't know what pond we're talking about here. What exactly are we talking about?
Wastewater treatment.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
But, Kevin, you can...
Yeah. Through your worship, it's the final pond in our treatment system and it was the berm sloughed in the result, from the heavy rains we had last summer. So, we actually had some design work done last fall, we took it to tender late last fall, but the prices came in significantly too high. We tweaked the drawings a bit, then went back out and we got three bits to over, which were much more in line of what we had anticipated.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven thirteen is report twelve one seventy-one, the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for the request for concurrence for the Rogers Telecommunications Tower. Councilor Parslow?
Move the recommendation that report number twelve dash one seven one for the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re-request for concurrence, Rogers Telecommunication Tower be received for information. Further, that staff be directed to advise Rogers Communications Incorporated that Rogers Communications Incorporated satisfactorily completed its consultation with the City of Dawson Creek. The City of Dawson Creek is satisfied with Rogers Communications Incorporated's public consultation process and does not require any further consultation with the public and the City of Dawson Creek concurs with Rogers Communications Incorporated's proposal to construct a wireless communication facility provided is constructed substantially in accordance with the plans submitted to it and described as GSA as Engineering Limited Design Drawings.
Seconded by Councilor Schuman. And questions? Comments? Councilor Schuman?
I'm just pleased to see that they looked at the design and made it more aesthetically pleasing. I know that was really our only concern around that and the fact that there won't be any big flashy lights on it is, is good also.
Okay. So, any other comments? Councilor Malkinson?
Since the, I'm in the understanding, I can't remember the conversation that I had with Mr. Shute, but placement of these towers is administered federally or something like that? We don't have much control over the, or autonomy over the placement of this tower?
Through your worship, we have none, but we are allowed to comment. So, the recommendation is regarding our comments. Our comments are one piece of information that the federal regulator will take into account. Were we to be, some municipalities have made efforts to prohibit these generally and they have not been successful because the federal regulatory body also has to look at issues around how dependent our society has become on mobile communications and what kind of levels of service can be provided. So, we're just one piece of input that goes into the decision.
Thanks. Seeing nothing else then? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Last report is seven fourteen, twelve one seventy-nine, which is the, from the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. This is regarding the Maverick Saloon Application for Temporary Change of Hours during the Fall Fair. Councilor Kenny?
I move the recommendation that report number twelve one seven nine from the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer regarding Maverick Saloon Application for a temporary change of hours on August ninth, tenth and eleventh, two thousand and twelve, from seven PM to two AM to seven PM to four AM be received and further that council recommend the application for the temporary change in hours be approved.
Okay. Seconded by anybody? Councilor McFadden? Comments? Councilor Kenny first?
I'll be speaking against this motion. I don't feel that we have to keep the saloons open until four AM in the morning. I think it's just encouraging overdrinking, I guess, you know, for lack of a better expression, you know, people coming home and, and it's in our downtown core and we have, you know, we have businesses there that are at risk, windows being broke, whatever. I'm not saying that everybody may behave badly, but it's, it's, I think we could discourage things a little bit by keeping the things closed at two AM instead of four AM in the morning. They should be sleeping.
Okay. Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, I, my question through your worship to staff is what would the comments from our RCMP detachment be around this issue? Do they have a comment? Do they have an opinion on this or what?
Greg?
Through your worship, if council approves this, the application goes to the liquor inspector in Fort St. John and it's her job to get the comments of the regulatory agencies.
But with that, what I can say is we've approved this in the past. The RCMP have said that they're aware of it, it's the Fall Fair weekend and because it's one-off, now they were... it's one-off, now they were very vocal when we had 4:00 AM year-round, and one of the issues that went, when we got rid of the 4:00 AM year-round to 2:00 AM was that we would allow people to apply, and I know that the other pub just around the corner also utilizes this sometimes either at Fall Fair or at New Year's and applies for the 4:00 AM. So, Greg, sorry.
Through your worship, furthermore, I should have reported this out. It's a 14-day process from the time that the Liquor Inspector gets our report, so it's not a rubber stamp by any stretch.
Yeah. Ours are just the comments, and they approve it, right? Okay, so Counsel Parzal?
Yes, I will be voting against this for, because I think Counsel Kenny summarized my thoughts as well. There's so much opportunity for imbibing that weekend, and I know what happens late at night in other cities and communities, and so I, I just think that we should retain our normal hours.
Okay, Counsel Schuman.
Yeah, and I, I also will be in opposition to this. I think that our RCMP staff will have their hands quite full enough with the Fall Fair festivities, the Beer Gardens, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't feel there's any need to extend it any longer than it needs to be.
Counsel Wilbur.
Well, yeah, I'm going, I will be speaking against it. I mean, after 2:00 AM, nobody needs any more alcohol, not even the Irish, so, you know, send them home safely. And I do, I agree with Counsel Schuman, the RCMP are busy enough on Fall Fair weekend with the watering hole of the fairgrounds and then getting them, watching people leave from there to downtown. My other concern is that if this was approved for this business, then other people with liquor licenses could then apply too, so now we have everyone with a liquor license open until 4:00 in all points of town. We've created quite a problem, so I will be speaking against it. I just think no good can come from two extra hours of drinking.
Sure. I think there's restrictions under liquor licensing on who can apply for it to the 4:00 AM, but I'm just going off of memory last time, because we've approved this in the past for the Alaska and for Mavericks, but I can't remember, not that it's a moot, maybe it's a moot point, Jim, but...
They didn't come last year.
Through your worship, I believe our rules in the past have been only relative to New Year's. I don't recall receiving one previously around the Fall Fair.
Okay. Any other comments? So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That's defeated. And last year, they, they came, but they, they came late and they didn't meet the 10-day notification, which is why it was denied.
Yeah.
So, they came a week before. Sorry, Brendan?
Through your worship, there should be a motion made that we can pass forward to the commission.
Thank you. So it should be, yeah. Counsel Schuman, you're gonna say?
So I'll, I'll make that motion.
That it be, that we do not support it?
That we do not support this and that that's forwarded to the commission.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Wilbur. Any further discussion on that one then? Probably not. Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We have a few bylaws, a bylaw. So we have 8-1, which is zoning amendment bylaw 4146, 2012, for third reading and adoption. Anyone? Okay, I'll make the motion then. This is the property that we had the consultation with this morning.
This one, okay, this one.
Okay, so I'll make the motion then for third reading and adoption, seconded by Counsel Schuman, so we can discuss it, otherwise we're done. Just want to highlight that it was great to have all those people come forward this morning. The reason why we've gone through this process is we've had such a variety of different proposals come forward for that property, and we're trying to be responsive to the development community. Most of the comments that were made this morning around water and the soil and all that, that's, to me, is irrelevant on the zoning. I mean, that's definitely some concerns that people have in the area, but what we're trying to be, what we should be discussing and voting and thinking on is what do we want actually in that area for housing or for development, irrespective, because the developer will be responsible for the curb, gutter, sewer, water, all that kind of stuff, working with staff to make sure that it all meets the requirements. If there's issues around water or sewer, those would have to be met in order to have the development, I assume, Kevin. So as, those are probably valid issues for the people there. In my opinion, those are irrelevant on the decision of what we're trying to make on what we want for zoning, so I want to have that discussion, counsel. Counsel Schuman.
Thank you. So I absolutely understand why we've gone down this road to rezon this property. I understand the problems that, that have come forward with developing this property. I have to say, though, that I have been swayed by the numerous residents at Forest Drive and along, along 92nd Avenue, and I, I think I'm going to oppose the rezoning to the RM1, and just, you know, I, I think about the, the traffic levels. I, my children attend Frank Ross, and so I'm down there in the morning and in the afternoon, or I was, and I know that the, the traffic down there is extraordinary, not just at school hours, but along 92nd Avenue, and, and I, I respect the, these people that have bought these properties on Forest Drive and 92nd Avenue with the knowledge that the adjacent property was zoned RS1, and so with that, I'm, I am going to vote against this rezoning.
I've got counsel, I've got a few councilors who want to speak, but if, if, Jim, can you, just on the process, so we're at third reading adoption, this is defeated, where are we at? What's the process after that?
Through your worship, that rezoning is dead. If you, if you vote against this at third reading, the rezoning is dead. That's the whole purpose for having a public hearing, is so that you can be informed what the community is thinking about the project. Then we would need to talk about whether you wish to entertain another rezoning request or proposals that require a rezoning request. I would certainly suggest to you that, summarizing what you heard this morning, some issues were clearly about the differences between good and bad developments, which are irrelevant to a rezoning, but others, the prevailing comments you see in the letters and you had today at the public hearing were around the certainty aspects, that people had made investment decisions based on that zoning and wished you not to change the zoning because that would interfere with what they saw as the bargain they had struck. Secondly, you heard various concerns about the impacts of upzoning on traffic and viewscapes. And thirdly, you heard some comments about public uses that the property now enjoys, including perhaps as a drainage corridor. In any event, I would suggest if you turn this down, that you additionally or subsequently indicate that you will entertain no proposals to purchase that property that require a rezoning for at least, say, the next two years. Otherwise, we're going to be continually bringing you proposals that require you to go through the same process you just went through, and all, the majority of the things you heard were either no development on that property or certainly no change to the zoning. If that persuades you, then I can't see the purpose of bringing back Mr. Hamm's proposal, for instance, which requires a rezoning. You would, you'd just have a perpetual public hearing requiring the neighbors to come out and tell you the same things they've already told you. So if you agree with them, then I don't know why you would put them through that again.
But if we approve it, we still have, it's still, if we keep it on the reserved list, it still has to have a development permit approved by council, so...
In any event, it will have to have a development permit approved by council. You've made a condition that you won't sell that property without seeing a development. The question is, and you can't do that unless it's compliant with the zoning, so the question is, would you entertain a proposal that required you to go back through a rezoning if you have just decided not to proceed on this rezoning?
Yeah. Okay. Which is one of the reasons why we went through this process, because we wanted to have that zoning change, so then we can have the options of more to look at to decide what we want up there, so Counsel Kenny.
No, well, I think, I think it was loud and clear that this is really going to affect those families and affect their investments. I didn't pay too much attention to their, the infrastructure issues, because as a developer, a developer would go in there and, and deal with those infrastructure issues, but I think as, you know, as homeowners, and they, they chose to live there for specific reasons, and I didn't see, I didn't see any unreasonableness with it, and they, and I think, you know, like the, the single, the single dwelling, you know, if it fits in that area, then maybe it should remain in that area. So I'll be not supporting it.
Okay, I have Counsel Wilbur, and then I'll work my way up.
Yeah, the infrastructure issues were not important to me, because like you said, during development, they had done, but I, I will be opposing this. One thing that did stick out to me was Mrs. Lepke's presentation, that there's a lot of history there, that maybe she should be preserved as just a green space, and in good faith, a past council did, my understanding is from the presenters, lead these investors to believe that that would not be rezoned. So though we have the option to change that, it would, I think, be more dignified to keep the word of council, that they invested their money there, and we're told that would not be rezoned. So, yeah, I mean, basically, what came to my mind through all of that was that it just remain a green space and be preserved, I guess, is that.
Okay. And just to clarify that, appreciate the individual's comments, but we've got no record or proof that any council ever said that either.
I'm just, it could be verified one way or the other.
Counsel Malkinson.
Your worship, I don't think that I'll be supporting this. I'm pretty sure I won't be. One of the main purposes of, I guess, government in general is to allow people to live together and tolerate each other a little bit more, and it's been made loud and clear this morning by the people in the gallery that they oppose this zoning, and one of the arguments that interested me the most was what single-family dwelling, or single-family units actually, it was about single-family dwell, dwellings actually encouraging sustainability. I think it was Mr. Molson that spoke of that, and that interested me quite a bit as well.
Counsel McFadden.
I'll be voting against the amendment, your worship, and I think the property should be rezoned as parkland and left just exactly the way it is, in its raw, undeveloped state, and then we won't have this problem forthcoming. We've done that before. We had some folks further down that sort of water trail that we changed some land and left it just raw and undeveloped, and that would be a great spot to, to have a park that's just the way it is, no, no upkeep, just in its natural state, and we wouldn't have to worry about zoning again, and everybody would be happy.
Okay, any other comments? This is why you love politics, right? This is the whole point of a public hearing, because we do public hearings. If you look, we just did one for Cal Tire, and we had a lot of the same arguments, but yet we approved that one. So, so I always find it interesting how this works, so. Personally, I totally agree with what a lot of the comments people have in the area, but I still like the fact that we can make our decision down the road and have the options open, so I think we should be doing third and final reading and at least going through the process. We've been working on this for, well, as long as I've been on council, I'm trying to do something, and you're right, every time, every time something comes forward, the people who live in that area oppose it, and I don't blame them one bit. If I lived on that street, I'd probably feel the same way, but the whole point of this is for community good and community need, and so you have to look at those issues as well. So, Counsel Parzal?
When we made this, started this bylaw, this rezoning, I think it, my impression was it was so that a developer, there were options. I mean, RM1, it can still be a single-family dwelling.
Yes, exactly.
Mr. Ron Hamm's proposal, which would be a single-family unit and four, a fourplex, which he would be privately owned by them and managed by them, was a very reasonable, and I thought a win-win. I mean, one of the concerns I have is, you know, we have to have accommodation for all people, and sometimes multiple dwellings will adopt on single-family dwellings. I kind of like developments that are mixed density, and so that's why I thought we had approved this, so that we could receive proposals for development that might be single-family or something like Mr. Hamm's proposal. I think that there are a number of issues that were raised that would have to be studied by any developer. The stop sign issue is, I think, ours. It is an awkward stop sign, and that is a very real concern to me, so, you know, as we talk about what's happening in the community from the point of view of rent, we do need low rental accommodation, and I'm not sure if these, this fourplex would be low rental. It may not be. I mean, with our current economic boom, prices are drawing up, but I, I thought we went this route, and I have met with residents of this area, and when I shared that the RM1 did not prohibit a single-family, it could still be a single-family, so we had one person come forward wanting to buy for a single-family, that person could be accommodated. We had one person come forward with a single-family and a fourplex and a buffer zone, that could be accommodated.
Yeah.
So going to RM1 enabled us to study the, the proposals further, and I, I think I would support the bylaw.
Yeah.
Third reading.
Yeah. I mean, thank you for that. The, I mean, I looked at Mr. Hamm's, and I appreciated his as well, but if we don't do this, then we can't even entertain it, as Jim said, and his actually was accommodating in the sense it was putting a green space and a buffer, but the whole point is if it goes, if this passes, it just leaves the options there. If it doesn't, then, then it's up to council, I guess, to take it from there, which direction we want to go. Okay, so, seeing no other comments? So the motion on the floor is for third reading and adoption, so all those in favor? Three opposed, and is defeated. Did you get those? Through your favor? Okay. So it is defeated, so, Jim, we'd have to entertain a new motion?
Through your worship, your options going forward are simply revisit this issue any time. Right now, we have a proposal from Mr. Hamm. If it comes forward to you at the next meeting, you can't sell zoning.
Yeah.
You have to reject it, and you have to go through exactly the same rezoning process you just did.
Yeah.
Which doesn't make any sense to me.
Nope, exactly.
I don't know if it makes sense to you, but to me personally, it makes no sense to do that. In preference, I think you ought to give a direction that you simply won't consider any proposal that isn't single-family dwelling for basically the two years that you remain in jurisdiction. If you don't do that, an alternative is, say, a green space, but that's a rezoning. So that would require the same public process, the same opportunity, for instance, the development community to come forward and tell you that there is a shortage of available development land and that they don't want you to put this into park. Here, there is no solution, as Counsel McFadden suggested, that makes everybody happy. You're in government. There is no such solution on any issue.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Schuman.
So then I would make the motion that we not entertain rezoning for this property for the next two years of our term, if that's appropriate at this time.
Certainly would provide an answer for people that staff can give.
Yeah. Seconded by Counsel Kenny. And any discussion, Counsel McFadden?
Would that include zoning it into parkland?
Yes, it would include any kind of rezoning.
Let me, what the motion is, to keep it single-family dwelling. I assume council's direction then would be to put it back on the sale block, because there's no point zoning, keeping it one thing and then not trying to sell it for that purpose. Okay, so we got the first and second, or any other comments? So all those in favor?
What's the motion?
To, the motion, sorry, is to, for the next two years, keep it, I assume, keep it for sale, but only... it for sale, but only entertain development proposals that will be single-family dwelling only. Which, by the way, we did have one individual who, that's what he was wanting to do, so.
And that will come forward to you because it's been held in abeyance pending the outcome of zoning?
Yep. So we could entertain that one.
It's only bound by, sorry.
Counsel Malkinson?
Such a motion would only be bound by council. Council could change it at any time in the next two years if that was its will, couldn't it? Sure we could.
Just like any motion, yeah?
Yeah.
Right now, it's to keep it that if we decide somebody comes forward. What we're trying to do is give staff some certainty. So these people are coming forward, requiring all these zoning changes to put the development. Staff will say, sorry, council's not going to entertain it, so let's not go there.
I'll be voting against the motion because I believe we should be open for any opportunities for, that are good for the community and it might, something might come that might be more appealing to people. I think we did have one decent proposal already. There may be others out there that involve some possible rezoning.
Yeah. And to that point, Mr. Hamm could convince everybody in that neighborhood that even his requires a zoning change, and they might support it, but.
Through your worship, just for review, though, you can't sell zoning. You own this property, you'd have to rezon it on your own initiative to whatever Mr. Hamm wanted. Then you would have to make it available to the general public.
Which is what we were just trying to do.
Not to Mr. Hamm, but to the general public.
Thank you. Okay. Anyway, motion's on the floor. Any other questions on that one? So all those in favor? Opposed? And it is carried. And Counsel McFadden and myself opposed. Okay. So we'll move on to mayor's business. Don't think we have to get into too much on that, other than thanks to everybody again for helping out. It's been a busy summer and everybody's.
Mature by two months. Starting today, we are again delivering water to Shell, and it is, the reports are that it's extremely high-quality. The stuff that's coming out can't be told by the naked eye apart from drinking water. It is an absolutely wonderful facility, and once everybody is out of there and we can, and we can go through it safely, I'd sure love to take council around so you can see what a tremendous piece of machinery you've got there. The Calvin Crook Center, we have an updated schedule that I got, that was updated to a week ago. I went in on Friday as well, so there's probably more work has happened. But according to the last schedule, in the basement, we're 67% complete, all the mechanical and electrical. Plumbing is 100% complete, and steel studs were 80, so likely more than that. And the stairway goes from the green room up to the back of house, the multipurpose hall is, has been poured as well. On the main floor, all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is 100% complete. Drywall and ceilings are 66% complete. Drywall is about 90. Upstairs, the second floor is drywalled. It's been taped and mudded, sanded. It's ready for flooring and painting, and T-bar ceiling is 50% complete upstairs. The plan that we're working on, which has been agreed to by the contractor, is to complete the top two floors and all of the mechanical, electrical systems for the building by the end of August 31st, which will allow us to get started on the damp proofing of the basement and the insulation of the weeping tile in the early fall.
Thank you. Counsel Malkinson?
So it looks like, through your worship, are you confident that 31st deadline will be achieved? Does it look good? Is that a proper question to ask in the open?
That's a, that's a proper question, through your worship, and I won't say it's a good question.
Oh.
But it is a question. You know, fool me once, shame on you. I will say that the commitments that the contractor has made have actually come to pass. Has a new superintendent on site to help out his current superintendent. He told me that they were going to get an extra crew of drywallers in, so they'd have two crews going, and that happened as well. And that's why the drywall in the main floor went by so quickly. He has also said, and we will, we will see this week, that he's bringing up four or five of his own workers that have been freed up from another project down south. So I will say that, yes, they are following through with their commitments, and they are operating in good faith.
Okay. Counsel Parson?
Greg, that was a good response.
Counsel Malkinson?
Does that mean that every other time, it means that it's a bad response, Mr. Parson?
No, no, I would never. Greg would never give us a bad response. Some better, maybe better than others, though.
Right on. Seeing no further questions or comments, we'll move on to consent calendar. Someone wants to move that? Counsel Schuman? Counsel Malkinson?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, or were you scratching?
Yeah, I moved that.
All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried, and strategic priorities charted. Jim?
Nothing new on the chart, your worship?
Thank you. And question-answer period. I don't see anybody signed up for that. Brenda? So we'll move then, no committee of the whole, so intermediate question period at this time. During the meeting? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I've got a few questions to follow up on that. Basically, that was sustainability plan. That motion include some moving around that quadrant and have, can have, how?
Yes. It was in the motion. Jim, did you want to?
Through your worship, we just needed a final approval from council. NAVCAN has agreed, but as you saw, the condition was that we were going to take on the operational cost and we were going to repair the roof membrane. And so council agreed to do that today, and so the transfer will now finalize.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
So that roof repair cost, that would be over the, the renovations to make it into a pilot lounge, like?
That's correct.
How much is it?
There was two different quotes, but it depends, once we go out, whether it's just going to be a repair or a full membrane needed. So that's not decided yet.
Oh, no, sorry, I meant for like the overall renovations, your additional cost.
Oh, the renovations to make it a pilot lounge?
Right.
Brendan, did you?
Through your worship, the estimate provided was $20,000.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if that's the intention of the airport manager. We'll have to wait for that quote to come in.
And we have had offers of support from some business groups and individuals in the community to contribute to the project.
That's right, thanks.
And the report also references that we can study that we've done. Is that available for the public community?
Yep. You on it?
Yeah. Have a coffee.
It's a very, it's actually a very interesting report.
It wasn't available until you received it today, but now it is.
Which, will it go online?
We'll put it on the website.
For anybody else in the media or public that's interested? Okay.
And so just to, I think it's going to ask the, well, in regards to the, to the art center, then, so the solution to the, to the basement, three conditions that still haven't been decided, then, is that we still know the motion to include that function or even how?
Yeah, as a council, what we've done is we've put a motion forward last meeting where we will, we've working with the developer to finish the top two floors. So that way there, we, I think, as you're aware, we decided not to finish off the basement because we're looking at the options of what we're going to do to ensure that there's no water infiltration before we do anything there. So as soon as all of that is finalized and released and what we're doing, then we'll definitely let you know. Okay. Is that all you have for now, Matt, then? Okay. Anybody else from the media during the meeting?
Are those programs with KPAK deals in the mid, at the end of August, or is it still living at the end of September?
No. We've had the discussions with KPAK, and KPAK is basically needing all or none, so to speak. They don't want to move half their operations down at this time, but we've been in close contact and discussions with the organizers of KPAK, so they know exactly what's going on, and they appreciate that as well because they don't want to be trying to operate out of two facilities. Okay. Well, seeing nothing else, we'll, what we'll do is we will make a motion to recess to the closed meeting. Counsel Schuman? Counsel Malkinson? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And we'll take five, 10 minutes because we breezed through that without a break. Saw a few people's eyes starting to flourish.